Overhead pipes, sewage, storm water. There's unsealed concrete. There's no real fire protection. There's no climate control. There's seepage. There's eroding floors. Fire-rated walls are lacking. Material in the corridors. No space for group visits. And very poor reading facilities. Difficult to supervise. Expansion space is lacking. And there are four different locations happening within the building. It's almost a litany of everything that you don't want in an archives repository area. It's pleasing that something is happening, but it's really a terrible state. And they're the worst conditions of any archives repository in Dunedin. Far worse than Hocken and Archives New Zealand. Worse than the Presbyterian Archives at Abernathy College. Worse than those which you have in Toito. But it's the third largest archives in the city. Now 4,000 linear metres. And really, I think the city deserves that. It's not only a major cultural asset. It's also important for legal purposes, for administrative purposes, and also for accountability. And if anything happened to those records, as Peter has already emphasised, it would be absolute disaster. It would be a calamity. So please do something. I can't say you've dropped the ball. It's barely been picked up in the first place, despite all our previous submissions. We do discern some movement happening in moving material out of critical, most critical material into better space. But there is a lot more there to be looked after than is being provided for in this way. So they're my thoughts. Dunedin can do a lot, lot better.
Can I just add one thing? The Chief Archivist of New Zealand, who has statutory responsibility for your archives, has issued instructions, not guideline, an instruction, to all the local authorities about how to look after their archives. And councillors, we've pointed out on several occasions, is in breach of those instructions.
Simon, Chief Executive says you may have an update.
Thank you through the Chair. So we did meet with representatives from the Archives and Records Association about a month ago now. And we outlined the short-term issue, the short-term response to those issues that have been outlined so well. We do recognise that we do have a problem with the sighting of those archives. They're less than ideal. So there's been a process underway of removing those archives that are most at risk to an off-site storage facility. And that's happening at the moment. The survey that's also been referred to is one of those key things that we wanted to undertake to understand really what the usage demand is like, the sort of records that people want to access. We do want to move to a situation where digital access becomes a lot easier. But obviously, that's a big piece of work that's longer term. So the initial response has been getting those records out that are most at risk. We've had a fairly frank conversation with those other partners, because everyone is really struggling with this as well. Archives just continue to grow and grow. So we've done a lot of work with the Hocken, but also looking at our own archives as well, because we obviously have archives at Toito and a significant collection at the library. So we're looking at those options about where that can provide the most, the greater access for the community, for researchers, but also safeguards, safeguards to those archives for future generations. So that piece of work is ongoing. But we are addressing that significant risk now.
Are you happy to take questions? Councillor Gary.
Thank you. I have a question about the value of the archives. So since your last submission in this one, I had a need to go and do a bit of research. And I was flabbergasted at the depth of the archives. I wondered if you could speak to what they contain, because many of us won't have accessed them unless you've got a specific reason. Could you speak to that?
A little bit. The archives, in fact, go back, I think the very earliest ones go back to the 1850s with the establishment of the original town board. They are good and continuous in terms of council, business, correspondence, things like that, very good. They also include all the, well, such as have survived, all the merged local authorities, such as Porch Armors, the Peninsular, Tyree, Waikouiti, and so on. So all of that wider area is encompassed. A hugely important part of them is the building records. They're massively important, I think, for housing purposes, so consents and building purposes. And they go back until before the First World War coming forward. And then there's also all the engineering records. There's nothing more important for a council to know where its drains and various infrastructure facilities. They don't, unfortunately, they're not totally complete and they're not always say where everything is, but they're very, very important too. I think Dunedin has one of the more complete and extensive archives in the country. 4,000 metres is a lot of records. That doesn't include the number of plans, which I imagine is several thousand as well. And they, of course, have a huge, a lot of valuable information. And included also, there's quite a lot of important photographic records, aerial surveys and things like that, which are very important, just showing how the city has developed over time. And, well, I could go on. But does that help in the short term?
Yes, it does. And a secondary very quick question around, you talked about the amalgamations. I believe the Otago Peninsula Council records were lost in a flood somewhere. And that's often been quoted as a big gap in information. So that's the sort of thing you're talking about, is it?
That's right. I think those records are often not as complete as they might be, because they have less facilities for preserving their records than perhaps the city council itself did, yeah.
Councillor Wilson.
Thank you. I'm just wondering if I could have a question to the staff, to Mr Pickford, because I just want to understand the cost implications potentially for this year. Now, and I'm going to say some terms which will probably offend you as archivists, but there are some things that we have that we need to have for the running of, and the risk is that we don't have those. And there are some nice-to-haves, which these guys definitely want to get to, but we don't absolutely need to. Are we really clear which records are which? And are we doing everything that we can to ensure the safety of those, that first category, as a priority? And does it need any more resource in this year?
Through the Chair. No, it's, the first task that we did was to identify those records that are, I guess, in high demand, the ones that we need for a day-to-day business as usual. And then making sure that they're safe and accessible within the building. But it's those records that maybe aren't used as much that we could safely store off-site, those records that are maybe digitised, that we can safely off-site. So there has been a priority project being done. So we're not just putting everything off-site to make it safe. There has been a lot of thought gone into how we might approach that.
So at the end of, I think I read somewhere about moving the pipes and getting the water out of that area, or the risks, mitigating the risks in that area. I'm not so worried about how accessible the records are to staff, because that can be overcome in other ways. It's more that they are safe whatever happens. And even some of the less used records may be the most needed records when we're comparing changes of the coast, for example, over time. So I'm just wondering, are you sure that we are prioritising and have enough resources into protecting all of those that may be needed now or in the future? Or do we need to put more money into this now?
Not at this stage. We feel that we've got enough resource. Our plan hasn't identified any need for resources outside of existing budgets. That's not saying the future. We might come to a point where we say, actually, we need to create something which is going to require some funding. But at this stage, not. We don't believe we need any more hours or physical resource. So that's been taken care of as part of the plan.
And last question. Do we charge for access to the archives? Because I would hate the fact that we're storing things and making it harder for people to access. Because I appreciate that the quality of the work that comes out of the research. We don't charge, we won't be charging more if it's harder to access, will we?
I don't believe so. Mr Dixon, is there any, I think there is a charge after a certain amount of time. Is that correct? I can't remember how it works.
I can only speak to the actual archive. But I think for the interesting archive, there is.
We don't charge. There is a kind of charge for once you go over a certain period of time. But it's one of those days in the event charge.
Thank you.
Councillor O'Malley.
I think it would be very doubtful if the council could properly charge for access to its archives. These are public records. And I don't know of any other council which charges for access to public records at all.
You might be interested to know, when you asked the question about looking after certain categories, the Chief Archivist has prescribed a list of protected records, which the council cannot dispose of, except back to Archives New Zealand. And they start off with all the meeting papers, all the agendas, minutes and papers of any meeting and of the senior executive management team, all the electoral records, the valuation and rating records, bylaws, standing orders, the certain financial records, all the unitary plans and other plans, property asset management records. And so it goes on. Fifteen categories.
Councillor O'Malley.
Thank you. To your point about whether information is or is not relevant, I was able to use those archives a while back to answer a question around Porch Armors and when we lost control of the speed limit down there to NZTA. And at the time was showing that pipe, especially the sewer and water pipes that sit near there. My question is really back to staff again. And I guess it's sort of been answered with Councillor Wilson. But is it possible for us to get an understanding before the next long-term plan, when we're really making major commitments to spending, as to what the mechanism is for protecting the archives and also making sure that there's access to researchers and councillors, for that matter, to those archives? So it's, you know, state-of-the-art, really. Because I think one of the things that probably not necessarily very aware of is that these annual plan hearings are fairly dominated by the long-term plan that precedes them, which is done every three years. So on the next long-term plan, is there opportunity to make sure that this is well covered?
Yes, that's the plan.
Thank you.
Councillor Vandervass.
Thank you for raising the issue and being persistent about it. Just as a high-level sort of question, do you foresee in the future a situation where instead of 4,000 linear metres of archives, we will have terabytes of digitised archives instead?
You certainly will. Because the council is creating electronic records every second of every day. And they also fall under the list of classes of protected records. It's format neutral. So whether paper or electronic, you are required to keep them. And what is worse, you are required to migrate them electronically forever. So you are creating terabytes. You are right.
I'm not quite sure if it would be instead of your original records. I think you would really want to keep your minute books and many of the other records. 4,000 metres, it sounds an awful lot. And we quote that to make it impressive. But in terms of the actual space they occupy, if you have dense storage, then it's not such a big deal in terms of accommodation. I mean, Hocken has 10,000 linear metres. So it's less than half of that. A similar amount maybe at Archives New Zealand. So 4,000 linear metres, it sounds like a dreadful burden. But if you put it into good space, on compact shelving, it will survive quite well. Some of it will be digitised. I would see that would be mainly for access purposes, so that people can sort of look at it remotely. And perhaps if it's done with keyword searching capability, that's always difficult with handwritten records, of which a lot of these will be for the older records, then that's an additional benefit too. But there's no doubt about it that paper in the original form is very, very durable compared to sort of digital records, which are up there in the atmosphere, so to speak, or in the cloud.
And council is not creating huge quantities of paper these days compared with the past, because of course so much is digital only.
So looking a bit at the nearer future, in fact, the future of these 4,000 linear metres, are you suggesting that it's not really practical for us to simply digitise them and compact them into a much smaller hard drive memory than actually keep rooms full of the stuff?
Well, I think it would be quite an expensive thing to do. Digitisation projects are not cheap, particularly if you want high-quality things. And I think it would be kind of, I don't know, like, a bit like cremation or something like that. I think there's something about the direct contact and continuity with the original record, which is, it's much better for appreciation of heritage. I mean, you can, I don't know of any other council which has really taken that route. Sometimes it's happened, I think, with microform building records. That hasn't always been terribly satisfactory because of loss of colour and things like that. But I, I think, yes. No, if I was in charge of the council, I would not just digitise and destroy, yeah.
So just to further refine that, I understand that a lot of these old records, especially of buildings, have beautifully drawn elevations of a lot of our buildings. I remember finding some in the archive in George Street. And I was astonished at simply how beautiful they were. Do you think that a lot of those sorts of archives actually qualify as works of art and therefore will never be successfully digitised?
Yes, well, I think so. I think of them as kind of primary evidence, there's a more direct connection. Some of them are very artistic and beautiful in their own terms. Stuff like that with architectural records in the Hocken Library. There are some in Toito. Certainly a lot at Archives New Zealand. And a lot here, in fact, with the building records. And if you go down into the Building Services Reception Counter, behind the desk there, you will see the Glendening Glass House, a beautiful drawing there as well. No, I think it would be vandalism to destroy records of that nature.
But you would agree that digitisation of them is desirable and would ease access for a lot of people?
Excellent idea to digitise, because you can access them anywhere in the world. But a lot of them are priceless. I mean, for instance, you've got the Lawson drawings, the drawings of this building that we're in are held. I mean, anybody who would suggest destroying those, I suggest would be lynched in the city of Dunedin if they tried that.
Thank you.
Councillor Elder.
Through the Chair, can I have just a quick question to Simon? And I know that Toito Early Setlers Museum is doing a lot of works behind the scenes in storage and archives. And I was just wondering whether that would release some space in the future? I was just querying.
Through the Chair, potentially. I suspect that collections, as we said before, tend to grow as opposed to shrink. And to clarify, we're not talking about destroying any records, just for the record. Toito keeps being donated things. And there are some gems that come from the community that we then become the guardians of. So whether Toito or the library or another facility becomes the long-term solution, I don't know the answer to that. But as I said before, we may come back to the council at the next long-term plan with something that actually has some, you know, some dollars attached to it. But Toito may be part of the solution. It may be the solution. But I suspect it may be something else. But I can't say what that is at the moment.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much for giving us a good hearing.
So we're going to Sophie Caddick. Councillors, I will just note here that I am on the board of the Otago Southland Cancer Society. I don't think that it's a conflict, as this is only hearing. But I will declare it. Sophie, the floor's yours.
Cool, thank you very much. And thank you for having me for the presentation. I'll try, mine won't be too long, I don't think. But I'm Sophie and I'm the Health Promotion and Advocacy Manager for the Division, the Cancer Society Division here in Otago and Southland. So I'm just kind of going to flick, read the submissions. But these are the key recommendations from my division up there. So I won't spend too much time repeating what's in my submission. But I'm going to spend a little bit more time talking about this recommendation in light of the results from a project we recently completed called the Fresh Air Project, which you're hopefully all aware of already. Unfortunately, I was hoping to have the results and evaluation report ready for the hearings today, but they're not quite done yet. So I'm just presenting preliminary results at this stage. And that's what you can see in the submission. But I just thought I'd talk briefly to it just to give you all an update. And happy to take a question at any time.
Councillor Hawkins.
Just quick with the notes, because I'm sorry. All my energy trying to get the Chairman's attention. Thank you, Sophie. My, apologies if this is a naive question. I'm not a physicist. But can you talk me through how warm shade works?
Yeah.
Is it just heaters?
No, it's kind of about the material and having a range of shades. So I'll just flick to. So I guess like your new, your latest hub at the B seating area, that's a really good example of providing a range of shade. So there's some kind of seats that are in full shade. There's some dappled shade from some of the trees. And there's some seats that have no shade. So in Otago and Southland, I guess, and probably a lot of the South Island, we have a unique kind of problem, I suppose, in that UVR doesn't equate to the heat. So you can still really strongly, like the UV is still really strong despite it being cold. Majority from September through to April. So warm shade, like those shade sales up there, it's really easy to purchase shades that keeps it too cold. So for example, if you're putting shade over playgrounds, that's really cold, kids won't want to play in it. So that's the main issue there. And so we're happy to provide support to kind of staff around finding appropriate shade that kind of lets sufficient heat through so that people still use it and are protected from the UV, yeah.
And one of those options are just mature trees?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, trees can, depending on how, the range of trees, there's some trees that are better at shade than others. And would be happy to provide kind of technical advice. Please don't quiz me on shady trees right now. I have to do some research. But yeah, there's a range of trees that provide better shade than others. So if you have like a tree policy, which I'm sure you probably already do, adding in shade trees into that would be a good way to get. I'm not saying that you have to have shade over every single seat or every single new development or rest area, but at least having some of them with shade, sufficient shade.
Great, thank you.
Councillor Benson-Pow.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Just a question about the other issue that on the earlier slide about smoke-free in public areas. We've had a number of submissions over the years from Public Health South and Smoke-Free Coalition and others, urging us to follow the model of other cities. There's been no action, not for whatever reason. Clearly, you're aware of developments in the central city, which we'll be discussing this afternoon, actually, which are likely to include further publics, extension on public spaces and seating outdoors and so on. Just confirming that you are advocating that those spaces in council public areas should be smoke-free?
Yeah, yeah, that's a recommendation for this. It's great that there's new developments happening and that one of the design principles in all those new developments is making it them people-friendly spaces. So I guess when there's, we recommend that spaces are made smoke-free when you're planning for a higher concentration of people using those spaces to protect from the, from second-hand smoke. And when you newly beautify places as well, it's an ideal opportunity to implement a smoke-free outdoor space. It's easier to do something when it's new than, as you're probably very well aware, to change it after it's already a problem.
Thank you.
Councillor Gary.
Thank you. Could you tell us a little more about the benefits of the Good Food Dunedin Initiative? Clearly, you must think they're a benefit because you've been talking about us continuing to fund it.
Yes, absolutely. We've definitely really appreciated being involved in the initiative. And there's some great things happening. And I guess as part of this annual plan submission, we'd love to see some council actions as well that are supporting the charter. Having the charter is brilliant and getting some external signatories as well. But it would be great, as well as working with external parties, to get some actions happening from the council also. So for example, I guess, like new developments are another great opportunity to incorporate some actions supporting that charter. And I know many, like Mercy Hospital was recently in the paper for signing up to the charter. But starting discussions with your own suppliers around creating food environments in public spaces that are good for the city, good for the environment and good for the planet is probably maybe more of a long-term plan submission about how you start engaging with your suppliers about those issues. So I've just got a picture of a vending machine up there. So things like that, when you've got council recreation facilities or anything. And I know supplier contracts are often sort of locked into for a long period of time. But at least starting to engage with some of those discussions and walking the principles of the charters like you kind of are encouraging others to do. But we've definitely really enjoyed. We host a lot of events in the community as well. We've enjoyed being able to work with the Food Resilience Officer to make things like our charity ball, menu aligned with the principles, or being able to access food vendors, for example, that are really for life, that offer healthier. Health is obviously important to us, as is the environment. But having those options available for us is important for those events too. So yeah, those are some of the things that we've really appreciated.
Thank you, Sophie.
Cool, yeah. I didn't know if you wanted to have a wee update on the Fresh Air Project. So yeah, so I guess one of the recommendations that we've got as well is to include smoke-free outdoor dining and leases on council-owned land. And like I mentioned earlier, we haven't quite got the results ready. But hopefully, we're going to work with the OTT and hopefully have results announced in time for World Smoke Free Day. And last time, we also presented to the Community and Culture Committee, which would be more than happy to do that as well or come back to the council and present our full results and report. But that's just a wee example of us launching the project with some local businesses in Dunedin. And I think one of the main reasons the project has been so successful is that collaborative community approach to the project. And we've really appreciated the council's support around the project as well and the building momentum in the hospitality sector. I think one of the benefits is that it has been so positive and such positive messaging out in the community. I know the hospitality sector often sort of has a rougher time with implementing legislation. So these are some examples of the positive coverage that we've. So these are some examples of the positive coverage that we've, we've had. We've had news articles, we've got our website and we've had, we also supported all the businesses with getting customer feedback so they knew what their customers were thinking about the smoke-free change as well. So we really just put in a lot of support for the businesses and I'm happy to answer any questions about how we supported those businesses to do that. But I just thought I'd put a wee snapshot up about what some of the customers are saying about smoke-free outdoor dining. There's been overwhelmingly positive support and we're still collating some of all the customer comments and doing a full thematic analysis, but I just thought I'd pop some of those up there for you and just remembering what else I was meant to say about that. And just to say that businesses were really mindful that changes might impact their reputation, their popularity and profitability. But all of our businesses are choosing to remain fully smoke-free in all their outdoor areas. And we now have about 45 venues across Otago and Southland, well, Queenstown and Vekago in Dunedin City who were part of the pilot, who are now all up on the website as well. Yeah.
councillor Vandervass.
Thank you. You've highlighted three areas, sun, food and smoke. Is there any particular action that you would like to see the DCC prioritise in any of those areas? Is there anything that strikes you as, as a bit of low-hanging fruit, something we could do easily and quickly that would help?
Yeah, I think, well, probably a lot, I guess it's just working, I'm not sure what kind of, around budget providing for shade provision and things like, like water fountains. I guess it would just be having a look at, at operational budgets around new developments and having a wee look at how much budget might be available for sort of new developments like that. And with things like shade, there are definitely shade options available already, but especially when you're prioritising activity and there's some highly exposed, like I'm just thinking of the cycle networks around the peninsula, there's some highly exposed areas. But reworking existing budgets can definitely be an easy low-hanging fruit around some of those kind of shade and water fountains that you've got. I mean, and for us, prioritising smoke-free is probably one of the main things, it can have one of the biggest impacts on the health of the community.
councillor Whibley.
Thank you. Sophie, just, smoke-free is just cigarettes or is it also including vaping?
So for outdoor environments, we recommend that it includes vaping as well. So we acknowledge that vaping is definitely a potentially useful cessation tool for people, but in terms of normalising smoke-free and vape-free environments, because I guess we're, vaping being a cessation tool with the goal to be getting off vaping as well. And in terms of normalising those environments, particularly for young people and children, keeping the environmental level smoke-free and vape-free as well.
councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Really encouraging to hear that your retention rate of your businesses is as high as that. And we've had, you've spoken previously and your predecessors have spoken previously about your favouring an encouragement model of social change rather than a regulatory one. So I'm just interested in how you see that, is that, would that also be your recommendation with regard to any move that we wanted to make around public spaces that while you would want it to be made clear that that was the desired outcome, you're not envisaging us having warranted officers out finding people for breaching those, you know what I mean? So just trying to get a sense of how you see that working in practice, that is in a public realm and the way that you've managed to make it work, obviously in the private, in private space, well, you know, private businesses on public space, but you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So all sort of public spaces are all voluntary across the whole of New Zealand and all councils and it's all a voluntary measure and using signage. And some councils, especially ones that are starting to make their CBD districts smoke-free are starting to develop their own unique city branding to communicate the message, like for example down in Mbakago, don't have a photo with me, but they've got, let's breathe more fresh air and lots of councils are starting to create their own signage and integrating their city kind of messages and views as well. And for example, some historic precincts, because I know we have delightful bright green signs that aren't always super attractive for everybody, so some historic precincts are developing their own signage that kind of fits in with those messages or starting to integrate them on any sign upgrades that you've got for like parks and rec, kind of when you've got advertising sort of no dogs or any of those kind of other, other aspects. And so for the outdoor dining with lease, outdoor dining that we did in the project, we provided quite a lot of support and messaging for the staff as well to help them support, to help them communicate the message when they're working in that space as well and how to communicate with customers in a really supportive and non-judgmental way. So we did a lot of that kind of support as well and we'd be more than happy to kind of share and still work with the council around getting some of those messages and supportive signage kind of going as well.
Thanks, Sophie. I think we've dried up the questions.
Cool, thank you very much.
Our next submitter is Peter Foster. Peter.
Just turn on your microphone, just the button in the middle at the bottom there.
That one?
The middle one, yep. That's it.
Okay. Now, if you have a look at that photo, I'm going to stand up for a minute and you'll see where my hands are. And I'm standing in a hollow that runs beside our road. The vehicle wheels go here, this is alt 900 kilometres deep, it's been told to the councils in six months and nothing has happened. Now, we've got about 50 metres of road like this, we've got another 50, 100 metres further up, which has got to cut out by, by rain. And my point I want to make today is, is that the servicing of rural roads is pretty poor. When we were under Silver Peaks County, our road was graded every six months and gravelled every year. We went for a stage in the early noughties where White's Road never got anything done for six to eight years, nothing. I complained bitterly and finally we got a bit of gravel put on. And what happens now is that instead of an engineer coming and looking at this and saying, right, this is what this road needs, it's apparently thrown over to the contractor to decide how to fix it. And I can imagine they'll take the cheapskate road because what's happened in the past is that contractors tend to find the cheapest source of gravel they can lay their fingers on. And one lot that was dumped on Church Road had so much fines in it that when it rained, it just turned to a dangerous slushy mess. Now, I have 400 metres of road that I maintain and there's 600 metres of White's Road that you guys maintain. Every winter, we get mud accumulating in the undersides of our cars that drops off outside our house and I'm sick of it. We don't get it from my road, my 400 metres, we get it from yours. And the reason is very simple, because a decade or two ago, I put on lime chip. Now, the lime solidifies, forms a barrier, stops the mud coming through, sheds the water, keeps the road dry, and so you have a good surface that lasts for a long time. But lime chips are a bit more expensive than the rubbish you put on our roads. So I think there's a need for the council to look at properly funding the maintenance of its current infrastructure before it gets carried away with some of these other projects and all of it. All right, so that's, that's my first point. Now, the other thing I'd like to mention is that there's talk of joining the one-way street systems, it'd be one carriageway through the CBD. Please don't. The one-way systems are in gridlock now, twice a day, you're travelling at 20 less kilometres an hour if you're lucky. The knees, past south of the Queen's Gardens, seems to be fine, that's four lanes. So those carriageways need to be three lanes, if not four lanes now. If you put them on one road, you're constraining future development for the next 20, 30 years. You're going to have gridlock. So that seems to me a bad idea, but it also raises the issue of parking because you're going to have to take out another lot of parking to allow that expansion to three or four lanes. And with a hospital going there, there seems to be no concrete evidence coming forward of what they plan for parking. Every hospital that I know of further north, Auckland and Christchurch in particular, have their own parking buildings. It is not good enough for elderly people to have to walk kilometres to get to the hospital because they can't park nearby without feeding the meters. And you know, if you've been in hospital, that you don't know how long you're going to be and you're waiting for an appointment, you can't rush out and feed a meter. So there needs to be good parking building. People going in for day surgery are going to be parking half the day. People, relatives of urgent medical or accident victims rush in there, they're totally distraught. The last thing they need to be doing is walking kilometres to get to the hospital. There needs to be a parking building for the hospital. Now, whether that's a joint DCC or hospital thing, but you're in a position to insist that this building programme puts a parking building in and I'm not. So I hope you take that one. Now, another point was the, the gridlock on the streets going at right angles to one-way street system. They now are regularly gridlocked and the reason is, my observation anyway, is that the turning traffic is now stopped from turning until the pedestrians, cyclists have had their chance. The problem is that frequently there are no pedestrians or cyclists, but the road traffic is stopped. Now, those roads are narrow, so the right-turning or left-turning traffic prevents the through traffic from going, so nobody goes anywhere. Now, I think at the very least, I mean, once upon a time, it used to be that if you were turning right or left, you had to give way to pedestrians, but nowadays we seem to have lights for them. But the solution would seem to me is that all those lights for the pedestrians or cyclists have push button and if the button isn't pushed, they don't get the lights. That would then mean that if there's no pedestrians there, the traffic can turn freely for the whole duration of that site, not being constrained. All right, so there's only one other point I'd like to make, Mr Chairman.
About another half a minute.
That's what I'll do. It's about your bridge to nowhere. I see that the, the bridge over the Waioa River in Franz Joseph is scheduled to cost 6.9 million. That's a very difficult bridge. It needs deep foundations into the bedrock through heaps of gravel that are coming down the river constantly. The edges of it are difficult. There's no way that it should cost 20 million for a footbridge. Now, I was in San Diego last year and San Diego has a bit, a bit like Queen's Gardens with, with a park through to the wharf. They have their commuter and their national rail go through that area and it's all parkland and it's all controlled by barrier arms and it seems to work fine. I don't see for the volume of traffic that's needed, that there's any need for a $20 million structure, that's a lot of money. I'd much rather see it put into the roads, the rural roads, because some of your rural people live 130 kilometres from Dunedin. I don't think they come to Dunedin very often, those people up past Macrae's. They need a better deal for their rural roads, that's the only thing they get for their rates effectively. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Happy to take questions.
Yes.
councillor Wilson.
Just, thank you, and I share your concerns about the rural roads and I know that there's some work happening on how that can be better addressed. I'm just trying to think what your second issue was because it was that, that I wanted to talk about another.
That was the one-way streets.
Yeah, the one-way streets, so you talked about, thank you, the hospital. And I'm just wondering, I, because you mentioned Christchurch, I looked it up just to see what they offer and they, actually very limited parking, mainly for mobility, but just wondering, what they suggest is that they offer a shuttle service for people to be picked up and dropped down. And we have consulted and sought consultation on buses and I'm just wondering if you've got anything to say about that as an option to take some congestion out of the town and to improve the parking? Not just about, not just about hospitals, but generally that if we get more people onto public transport, they get to the office, they need to go to another meeting, they do the loop bus, whether that will provide for, and get rid of some of those issues of one car?
I think that would be fine if the frequency was good enough.
Right. And that's why we're looking at a 12-minute circuit.
Yeah, yeah, because, you know, a lot of people are in a rush to get in with their relatives or people working, but there still needs to be some parking facility, which shouldn't actually be charged for. Most of the other hospitals don't charge for parking if you are a staff or patient or outpatient.
That would be a lot of car parks in a hospital free, but I don't, I don't want to debate that, but I, do you think as we, as the hospitals develop, that we should be encouraging them not necessarily just to focus on car parks, but shuttle services for patients and staff as traffic management?
Well, that's clearly a solution, yes, but you're somewhere, you still have to have parking.
Yep.
The North Shore Hospital has an enormous parking building, it would be nearly 18 kilometres and that's right adjacent to the hospital, very easy for, and that's, you know.
Do they own that?
I presume so, it doesn't cost anything.
Okay, thank you.
councillor Vandervass.
Thank you very much for your submission. Regarding servicing of rural roads, we had a problem a few years back where some of the gravels being used had very large sharp stones in them and one farmer complained to me he'd lost four expensive tyres in a month.
Yes.
Through to sharp stones. Have, I believe that we sorted that problem back then. Have you had any experience of the sharp stone problem or is it mainly just the cheap mud gravel problem?
No, we have had, had sharp stone problems some years back.
But not recently?
Haven't had it recently, but, not recently, but it was an issue. I had one or two tyres had to be replaced because of that.
Glad, glad to hear that that one is in the problem.
Sorry?
I'm glad to hear that that seems to be a solved problem.
Yeah, the main issue to us, I think, is the mud. It's just what gravel gets put on gets pushed into the mud, mud's back on top.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Our next submitter is William Dreher. Welcome and the floor is yours.
Kia ora koutou. I am not William Dreher, I am James Heath. William Dreher is to my right and we are from the Otago University Students' Association. Before we get into our submission, I want to note that this year we are asking councillors to listen to the student voice, but we also see it important that we bring the student voice to you and that we take part in processes like this, not just during an election. But you, you probably would have received our written report, so we're just going to touch on a few of the highlights we consider. Pass it over to Will.
Fantastic. Hello, everyone. So firstly, we would recommend that the DCC develops a comprehensive climate change action plan by the beginning of 2021, as well as encourage, we encourage the DCC to undertake a climate change risk report and to be published by the end of the 2019, 2020 fiscal year, financial year. We believe that this city, as do all cities in New Zealand and indeed the world, have a responsibility to tackle climate change head-on for the sake of all future generations. In light of that, we support that our two lower environmental strategy, but would ask that you reprioritise its focus towards action on climate change and the reduction of Dunedin emissions to be in line with Dunedin's goal to be carbon neutral by 2050.
Brilliant. Another key focus in our submission is local body elections and particularly in lines of looking at providing special voting booths or voting booths at libraries across the Dunedin City area. This is, we consider an issue of equity, providing equitable access for all members of our communities, not just students, but all members of our community, equitable access to voting in local body elections and we consider it quite a, quite a top priority for OSA.
In terms of public transport and transportation in general, OSA supports the reduction of bus fares as well as supports your proposal for the free central city bus loop. We would recommend or encourage the DCC to make sure that the buses or the central city bus loop is electric and we support the DCC or encourage the DCC to work with the ORC to lobby central government to allow for the handover of the Otago Regional to allow for the handover of the Otaka Regional Council's public transport responsibilities to the DCC, as we think it would be better managed with the DCC. In terms of urban planning, we support the upgrade to the tertiary precinct, but would encourage the DCC to increase funding levels, as we believe there's a lot that can be done to upgrade the tertiary precinct, as well including introducing community composting areas and community recycling centres. OUSA strongly encourages the DCC to include OUSA as a stakeholder in this tertiary precinct upgrade. We also would like to encourage the DCC to begin transitioning street name signs, council and building signage and other signage to be bilingual in Tereiro Maori and English. We would also encourage the DCC to establish a voluntary renting warrant of fitness for Dunedin. We believe that there are some areas in Dunedin which have very low standard or quality of housing stock, and believe a renting warrant of fitness would help address this issue.
Further on to alcohol, alcohol bylaws, OUSA encourage the DCC to look at harm reduction methods when it comes down to it. This could be potentially looking at the liberalisation of alcohol laws, encouraging students to actually drink in safe places. Places like bars have water, they have security guards. They're safe places for students to drink, rather than heightened prices potentially pushing them to other locations. Those are the highlights of our written report. We welcome any questions, but thank you very much for the opportunity to actually speak to this and to take part in the processes.
councillor Benson Pope.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, gentlemen. I think you're probably aware that the city values our biggest business and those who work in it, one way or another. And so I really appreciate the comprehensive nature of your submission. I want to ask about the voting mentioned, because I've always found it a shame that such a big cohort in our community has much less to say at the ballot box or on the written voting paper, which I'll come to, than is desirable, actually. So I hope you can change that. But you talk about polling booths. Given that we're talking about for local government, we're talking about a ballot by mail, how do you imagine, how do you envisage that working or should be actual focus be on enrolment so people do get voting papers or both?
Well, I'd say a bit of both. So a focus on enrolment is quite key, and that's something our organisation is doing right now, really pushing students to enrol. But with the voting booths, special voting booths, I think, as you're probably well aware, allows unenrolled residents to vote at the day. And student communities are quite transient and are probably more likely than your average resident to not be correctly enrolled. There's actually probably quite the same for most, I guess, or lower socio-economic communities across Dunedin. So that's why I think we consider by having special voting booths at libraries, potentially that avoids, I guess, lower socio-economic communities and those transit communities from having barriers to voting in local body elections. And that sort of answers your question?
Yes, it does. But in terms of the student cohort, you made some mention of it, you have got action in place to get people involved.
Yeah, 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 yeah. The way we see it is that students are part of this community, and we think it's important that they actually have the responsibility to engage in local body elections and vote. Voting is a right, but also it comes with the responsibility to engage in it. And so we're really pushing our community, again, just purely by basis of them being 20% or so, 15% of the Dunedin City community, we're really pushing them to engage in it, yeah.
Great, thank you.
councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Kia ora koutou, and great to see the Students Association take such a renewed interest in civic affairs this year under your leadership, Mr President. Two questions, one is around flooding and one is around the environment strategy comments that you made. And I wonder to what degree, and council has previously been supportive of all manner of investigations into what a voluntary or otherwise rental warrant of fitness might look like. But to what degree do you think those conversations have been superseded by the healthy homes regulations around rental standards, which will come into effect by 2021, I think? At which point it becomes more of a monitoring and enforcement issue rather than a new regulatory framework issue?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'd first want to acknowledge, obviously, that the mayor's housing was workforce, and the work that's being, I think, was released today around that, from councillor Hawkins. In terms of the rental warrant of fitness, I believe Wellington, the University of Otaka Wellington campus released a report a few years ago into the rental warrant of fitness and the potential benefits around there. But in terms of rental warrant of fitness against the healthy homes changes, I think I'd say we need to look, I guess, ahead into, oh, that's a bit of a.
The thing is that Dunedin has a very cold climate, so the regulations that are in place for nationally might not be suitable for Dunedin in particular. We have much colder winters than somewhere, say, like Wellington or Auckland. So having a Dunedin voluntary renting warrant of fitness would ensure that the standards comply to the Dunedin climate and ensure that everyone has healthy homes in Dunedin as well as nationally.
So I'll bring him along.
Thank you. And it's notable that the regulations didn't include minimum temperatures for bedrooms, which, speaking from experience, is an issue here. My second one was around your request to refocus the efforts of the Tāorua work onto climate change. And that's obviously a big issue, but I'm aware of the report out this morning or overnight that suggests 1 million species will be extinct in the not-too-distant future and the biodiversity crisis ecosystem collapse that we're facing. Do you see that work as being related to the climate change? Because that's another strand of Tāorua.
Well, I mean, everything in terms of the environment is interrelated and biodiversity has huge impacts on climate change and the ability for the human species to survive in terms of the resilience of our local environment. So the biodiversity and conservation stuff is really important. We are just asking for a greater focus on the environment, which we, on climate change, which we have been aware that has slipped in terms of the focus of Tāorua, the environmental strategy.
Okay, so you're asking us to do more of some things, not less of others?
Yes, yes. We also, in the submission, asked for an increase in funding for Tāorua, which would cover that, but we just didn't highlight that then.
councillor Gary.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Heath, Mr Dreher, and for your leadership in so many areas. And I was really impressed on ends that day, particularly around the Tereiro leadership. I wanted to ask you around your election plans and terms of engaging students. I had experience last time was going towards of residents and was really impressed with the engagement around enrolment. But there was an awful lot of confusion amongst out-of-town students around where and how and what in terms of enrolment. Will you be addressing that specifically as you promote the enrolment as a first stage?
Yeah, well, we have already started doing the promotion of enrolment, and part of that has been working with the electoral commission. We currently are about to launch, we're about to launch the next phase of our enrolment strategy, which will include reminding students that this is their city as well, that they don't have to vote at home or their parents' home, this is their home. So we will be trying to get more students to vote here and try and clear up that confusion, tell them that they, how they can enrol to make sure they're enrolled to vote in Dunedin.
I think, yeah, a key thing is we are working alongside, as Will mentioned, the electoral commission, to make sure that the messaging we're putting out there is hitting the key misinformation and the key, I guess, ambiguities around elections.
So when it comes to the election in terms of engaging students and voting, do you think it's likely because of key issues like climate change and so forth, there'll be more engagement from students because, as my colleagues said, you know, a very important part of the commission?
Yes, well, councillor, you've touched on probably one of our key, I guess, one of our key priorities this election is we're not necessarily pushing local body elections, we're pushing climate change, we're pushing issues that students care about. If you said to me in first year, care about a council, I don't know if I would, but if you said to me in first year, care about housing standards, the environment, caring about Tāorua, it'd be a much different answer. And so that's the process we're taking.
Excellent, thank you. And I just wondered, I wanted to ask you, are you going to lobby ORC around the bus services?
Yes, yes. So our local body election push isn't just DCC, ORC, DHV, and the whole cohort, really, yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
councillor Wiley.
Thank you. Gentlemen, you touched on recycling in your submission. What could we do better in that area around the campus?
I mean, I think I would actually probably note something that the DCC is doing, which we consider really good practice. I think looking at Marsh Sadi Centre in Dunedin North is looking at establishing a recycling centre there. That's work being done by the DCC team. And I would actually flag that as a perfect example of the work that should be done. So more of that is a really, I guess, short answer to your question.
And, sorry.
One thing I would suggest is moving thin collection days to Monday, Tuesday or Wednesday. These are nights where there's less people on the streets and there's less likely to accidentally get tipped over by some people. So, yeah, moving it so that recycling works better in that way for students as well, yeah.
Okay. How can, how is OUSA working with the students as well to improve their recycling? Having been out of Campus Watch one night and seeing some of the horrendous states, especially in the back of the flats and the accumulation of rubbish?
So we work quite closely with Dave Scott de Proctor and his Campus Watch team to help them, pushing students, reminding them to, well, look after your backyard, really, when it comes to that responsibility, cleaning up after yourself. I mean, I use the example of Hyde Street, after Hyde Street, residents came out the morning after, cleaned up the street, and if you saw Hyde Street the day after Hyde, you would not believe Hyde Street happened. It's a perfect example of how we organise our students to take responsibility in cleaning up after themselves.
Perfect. And you touched on alcohol in the submission. How's that working with OUSA now running or owning Starters Bar and achieving what you were talking about here in your submission?
So we consider that the purpose behind Starters Bar is providing a safe and secure place for students. And in the ideal world, actually, every bar is that. Bars are places, as mentioned before, that have water, security guards, monitored CCTV. That's where we want our students to drink. And so the purpose behind Starters, and I think it's a success because it's been very successful, is because that's what we're doing with it. We bought Starters so we could guarantee a safe place for students. And potentially by looking at alcohol bylaws and looking how we can encourage the rest of our bars to continue to be safe places for students, we could see a positive direction.
councillor Vandevos.
Thank you. It's very kind of you, William, to suggest that the DCC would better manage public transport. Thank you for that. I was hoping that you might expand on that a little bit, especially given that the ORC has decades of experience in public transport and has not that long ago spent an extra $12 million actually researching how to improve their routes and everything else. What makes you think that the DCC will actually better manage what is always going to be a difficult issue of public transport?
Yeah, I mean, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but is it bus routes and bus stops are separated between the DCC and ORC? And that, I mean, from a logistical perspective, seems like a nightmare. So that's one place to probably start, I'd imagine, if you'd agree or not. And also, in terms of decades of experience, not that necessarily should be the argument to keep things the way they are. Just because we've done something for the last 40 years doesn't mean we should continue to do it, and we should look at other options going forward to improve it. That answer your question? You can ask a follow-up if you want, from Will.
councillor Elder.
I was, thank you, Chair. I was just really interested in your comments about alcohol and students and alcohol. Could you unpack that a bit more for me, that discussion?
Yeah, so I mean, unpacking it in terms of where we consider safe places for students to drink? Yeah, so, again, I'm not sure how much I can unpack it in terms of bars or places. I've listed why bars are positive places to drink. And I would probably say the alcohol bylaws that potentially restrict bars and how they can operate make bars less of an attractive place for students to go and less of an attractive, I guess, business opportunity for people to run.
I mean, in the past, we saw in Dunedin a really positive or healthy bar culture. Students would drink in bars. And over the past few decades, laws have changed and that have basically pushed students towards flat parties because the cost of drinking in a bar is now much higher than it used to be. And so we did include in our submission a encouragement for the DCC to lobby central government to reduce the minimum cost that bars must charge for alcohol, which would allow bars to serve cheaper alcohol, which would keep, would move students back from flat parties, which are unregulated, insecure, don't have security guards, don't have CCTV, move students from flats back into town where there are CCTV, security guards and the like, which we think is a safer place for students to drink.
The other thing is the sale of alcohol and big supermarkets, et cetera, being able to provide alcohol at very low prices and that being accessible inside the supermarket. Do you have any comment about that?
I don't think we've got any particular stance on supermarkets selling alcohol.
But I'd say it is a good example of how the path of least resistance, the alcohol is cheaper there, it means that students aren't, or even the community actually, aren't going to safer places to drink.
Thank you.
councillor Laufisso.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Thank you for your submission and for your presentation. I am focused on the last aspect of your written submission, which is engagement. And I'm curious as to why you would encourage the OUSA, I mean, the DCC, to engage with Tereiro Maori and Uniku. From my perspective, we would engage with you directly as a as the overarching organisation with respect to Tereiro Maori and Uniku. But can you, given that we have the next mire, Kaia Tahu, which is asking us in terms of our partnership, respecting them as treaty partners, can you speak to your relationship as OUSA with Tereiro Maori?
So, yeah, I think I'd briefly say that engaging just with, engaging with OUSA and Tereiro Maori and Uniku, they're not mutually exclusive. Engaging with us, yeah, we would encourage you to engage with us alongside Tereiro Maori and Uniku. Talking into what OUSA is doing, this year, actually, we're really trying to put a focus on improving our engagement, not just with Tereiro Maori, but with Tāorua Maori, Te Kanga Maori, and making an organisation as actually representative and reflective of our community.
councillor O'Malley.
Kia ora will and James, how you doing? I want to sort of, I'm going to go top to bottom, and I've got like four questions to ask you here. Your questions, your submission around climate change, you still mentioned our, well, they still are, our target numbers of carbon neutral by 2050. Do you think based on the way things are going that that is actually a really, a truly proactive date, or whether or not we should pull that date in a bit closer, 2035?
Yeah, well, according to the IPCC, the latest IPC 1.5 degrees report, we do have less time than 2050 to become carbon neutral. So, yeah, if you're willing to pull that date in further, then we would support that.
So you are willing to support the idea that we pull that date in a bit further?
Oh, definitely.
Great. And it's sort of following in from that, with our environmental solutions, we are in the process of developing what's called the Waste Futures Programme. It sort of coincides with the conclusion of the Green Island landfill. But with it's coming, many more services and a redesign of the service systems that we're doing. You mentioned the recycling centre that might go in near the old gardens. Do you want a greater role again with OUSA in some of the design for that area? I mean, I think that the north end and the student area is particularly unique. So would you say that you have any new perspective to offer and potentially would like more in the design process?
Yeah, and again, we're always willing to give more feedback and input. I mean, this is a good example, I think, of us really willing to take part in the processes. So any more input and involvement in which we can help execute it properly, we'd be more than willing to do.
We'd love to be included as a stakeholder on that.
Great. Transport, the issue of the buses connecting Dunedin is now, I'm bringing this up every time transport comes up, because I'm trying to get, see if this committee in fact could play a more active role. There is now a joint governance committee formed and looking at ORC, DCC and NZTA acting in a coordinated manner. So that could be potential one mechanism by which we get some of these outcomes. But you've also suggested that you'd like us to encourage central government to change some of the rules. And, you know, the Land Transport Management Act and the public transport operating models, probably the two that matter the most there. Would OUSA and even New Zealand Student Association be willing themselves to act as lobbyists on these points as well? Because I think that if you take this seriously, the more voices, the better. Would you be willing, if we were to start, we have done a council resolution, in fact, around that point, councillor Hawkins put that resolution up. Would you be willing to come in as well, rather than just say, let's ask the DCC to do that? Would OUSA be willing to also be a submitter? Would OUSA be willing to also be a submitter and a lobbyist that's safe for the change?
Yeah, I mean, I think by virtue of supporting the position, OUSA would be prepared to support and lobby on it. We can't right now speak on behalf of NZUSA, but it's definitely something that can be brought to the national executive in terms of supporting further changes.
Right. And then the last one is the alcohol policy and obviously your role with Starters. What do you think the role of the university itself has been in this environment? Notably, a good example, in fact, would be the closure of the gardens and turning it into a study centre. And I used to be a fairly regular participant at the book. There is an obvious lack of bars in the north end compared to what there used to be and substantially more students there since back then. And I have asked this question, and maybe this is the answer I'm looking for. Why are more students on the street or out in front of their houses than there used to be in the past? Do you think the lack of venues is a contributing factor there?
Yeah, the short answer is yeah.
Cool. And do you think you're getting the right support from the university itself as an institution?
I mean, I can't necessarily think off the top of my head what further support we'd require from the university on this matter. I wouldn't say it's up to the university to be managing and organising the bars around Dunedin. So off the top of my head right now, I can't think of any further support we'd ask for.
Cool. And the last one is, we, I just got contacted by student voice Otago. Can you tell me who they are and how they relate to you guys?
They're a community group, student group, that are within the OSA Clubs and Societies branch who care about consultation and student issues, essentially. Is this in reference to the parking changes?
Yeah, yeah, something tomorrow about four o'clock, which unfortunately is, we're still in these sessions.
Yeah, yeah, they care about consultation and student issues, and so that fits very well into their scope.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
It seems to bring us to the end of the questions, so thank you, guys.
Brilliant.
Very good submission.
Thank you, we really appreciate the opportunity to speak. Thank you very much.
Our next submitter is Tahu. Just need to select a microphone and press the button. Okay, my floor is all yours.
Oh, Kia ora tatau, mēhi te nai, kea koutou, te kaunihera, te manafaka haere o ho te pooti nai, aku mēhi te nai, kea koutou, noro tia mātou, o Kaia Tahu o kaatima moi, e mēhi ake nai, te nā koutou, te nā koutou. I, look, you guys had a busy day, I'll cut straight to the chase. Really, the submission is not complicated. It's, and it extends on a conversation we started with you guys a year ago. And it represents a shift in the way that we're proposing working with the Dunedin City Council. We've got a number of projects that we're currently engaged with the DCC on, as you could imagine, most of them around our partnership responsibilities. And the model that we've employed in the past really is to try and make a slight business case for each of them. We chase a bit of money, then we can commit some resource from either side to that project and then complete it. And it's pretty inefficient, and that, we think that there's a really core set of work that we need to do as partners, and that if we're prepared to behave like partners, which is put in some resourcing from either end, that there is a whole bunch of that work that we can get done more efficiently, which also allows us to build up some sort of collateral within the partnership and capacity in each of the parties. So we're asking for a reasonably modest figure of 250,000, which we would match, and so we'd end up with a partnership fund of 500,000, which would contribute to, when we talk about core business, the sorts of things I'm talking about are working on our, working on planning and supporting policy and plan reviews, providing cultural expertise and treaty analysis as required across a range of projects that the DCC are involved in, actively pursuing some of the other partnership opportunities. Areas that are a priority both to us and to you guys are around things like climate change, housing, particularly the idea of community and social housing in the city and the basic housing requirements, waste management. We're in active discussions at the moment on a number of these issues, and it just allows us to step the game up and get more prepared and more engaged and hopefully more effective. The other major DCC projects that we're currently involved in around things like the central city development, and we've managed to do quite a few new things there. We've got representation at the governance oversight, we've got our people sitting on the planning team at the moment, which is something new. We're also actively engaged in discussions with the design team about what the, how to include some of the cultural and narrative aspects into the urban design components of the central city development. These are really exciting things, which allow us to build up greater capability for the future for some of these other projects as they unfold. There are other areas that I think over the year, if we, as we improve the quality of the relationship, I think there are some other things which need to be addressed and we should explore those actively through the year and probably present more directly at the next submission. That's about EWE representation on the DCC subcommittees. Apparently, all of that's unremunerated, which means we don't necessarily get the quality of representation necessary to get the best outcome. I think that's, we both lose in that regard. So at some point, we need to really address making sure we get the best representation in those committees, because it could make quite a difference to the outcome. The general capacity, I think, I mean, you guys struggle for, you know, the quality staff that are needed for some of the challenges that the city's facing over the next 20 to 50 years, and similarly so do we. So if there's ways that we can build that capacity and capability together, I think we should be exploring that actively. And the other thing, which, it's a bit of a buzzword at the moment, but I think it's really critical to explore social procurement and to understand the purchasing power and the political power that the DCC have as an enabler for producing other outcomes here in the city. For us, of course, what's important is that those outcomes impact on the Maori community. And just for your own interest, to know that 27% of the Dunedin Maori population is under the age of 25, compared to only 18% of the rest of the population, and that 60% of young Maori will leave school with NCA level three or less. And that unless we actually, this is just Dunedin I'm talking about, this isn't a national statistic, that unless we get smart about how it is we're engaging those kids, providing them with opportunities to get better skilled, then it's the city that will suffer, because that's a significant proportion of the future workforce that we're missing out on. So these are the sorts of things we just need to get a lot smarter about, and, you know, the DCC's in such a critical position in their ability to be enabling some of these more innovative outcomes. Kia ora.
Thank you. Tahu, you're happy to take questions, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Kia ora, Tahu, great to have you here. It seems like a missed opportunity to have it at the end of the day rather than at the beginning of the week. In terms of resourcing the relationship, which is essentially what the submission is, aside from being the right thing to do as a treaty partner, is your concern at a pragmatic level that by continuing along a project-based approach, you lose momentum and that you have to start, essentially start again around each individual project rather than putting together a longer-term programme of work that could be more efficiently progressed?
Yeah, that's one of the major problems. The other is, it doesn't give us that long-term ability to invest and grow the expertise. For us to be able to say, great, because we want to have the same conversation with a number of the other territorial authorities that we're in a relationship with across Otago, which would then mean we end up with a team of core planners and designers and policy developers that are able to meet a need in a much more effective manner than if we're trying to bring teams together just for a project because the funding's to be available. It's about a long-term picture.
And if I may, just following on from that, the best a council can offer you is three years' security or potentially even one year, given the nature of not being able to bind future councils to our funding decisions, which is a challenge in all sorts of areas. But to what, I mean, what degree of longer-term funding surety do you think we would be able to get from Kaia Tahu for this work?
We, once we start to lock down these arrangements, our current practices, they become permanent, they only tend, if it's about core business and an investment like that, then we tend to CPI adjust them for the long term. That would be our approach.
Any other questions, councillors? If not, thank you, Tahu.
It's fine.
That brings us to the end of our submitters for today, so I'll move that we adjourn the meeting until 9am tomorrow morning. councillor Vandervass seconds, all in favour?
Aye.
Against?
Carried.
Thank you, everyone.